Everybody can be seated, we'll get started with our workshop. One thing I want to say before we get started, obviously, I'm not Ted Runly, I have more hair, he's better looking, but in all seriousness, Ted is not with us, as you know, if you attended our meetings or watched it, he was not able to be with us in our two public hearings concerning the mileage rate yesterday because of his mother's illness, and so he again is not able to be here tonight. I do ask you to continue to pray for the family, pray for his mother. She's, I don't have any other report that I can give other than that right now, but that is the reason that he's not here. Therefore, as vice chair, I will be conducting this, and I'm not, just be honest with you, I went to Davis, he went to Dade, and he's a little swifter on it than I am because he does it every week or every month. But we will get started here, and to the commissioners now, first item is the approval of the agenda, and we've all had it for several days. Any additions? Do we need to amend anything? Or anybody, everybody good with it?
I'm good with it.
Everybody good? All right, put that on the consent agenda. Approval of previous minutes, we have them, have been sent to us via email. Does anybody have any additions, anything, any corrections or anything to make to the minutes of the last meeting? Hearing none, we will put that on the consent agenda. The third thing then is our, looking at our status report, employee status report, everybody's got that before you. One thing we will ask you to do, we're trying a brand new thing, this is our second month on it, so we're trying to keep up, rather than flipping pages in a notebook, we're flipping pages on a workbook, so any questions on that? All right, put that on consent agenda, there's no questions. Okay, board appointments and proclamations. We have an appointment to the water, well, getting a little bit ahead of myself, we have a proclamation for Purple Heart Day of the American Legion Post here in Trenton 106. Is anyone here from the American Legion that wanted to say a word about that if you, if you'd like?
I don't know really, know nothing about it, dude.
Then that makes me...
I belong to it, I've been around years.
Well, obviously you haven't talked to Gary Bell, but this is a proclamation for Purple, Purple Heart Day, August 7th, 2021, and this, it says that Dade County has a Purple Heart County and recognize August 7th, 2021 as Purple Heart Day in Dade County in conjunction with the American Legion Post 106 honoring our soldiers, soldier's service and sacrifice to our nation's men and women in uniform who wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans, and we urge all citizens to observe this day in honor and remembrance with the appropriate ceremonies and activities resolved this day, fifth day of August 20 and 21. And I don't know, we may have other, how many veterans are here? Could you stand just a moment and thank y'all for what you did? And if you, I had a brother who was a Vietnam veteran, if you were a Vietnam veteran, welcome home. We also have an appointment for the Water Authority for the resignation of H.A. McKeg, H.A. went to work with our, he is now our deputy magistrate, I guess is the title, so he had to resign, and we've been a long time trying to find somebody, and it is District 4, and we try to stay within the district, so if anybody hears from Lookout Mountain and you're interested, or you know somebody that might be serving on the Water Authority, then please get with Melissa because that's her district, and we'll try to get somebody that's been, quite a while now, he's been gone, but H.A.'s been gone, we just haven't been able to find anybody. So if you're watching this and you live on Lookout Mountain or anywhere in District 4, Canyon, Park Estates, in that area, then call someone here at the office or get with Melissa out, is, out there. Okay, approval of splash or capital equipment, if any?
We don't have any.
We don't have any? We do have some money, we do have some splash, we just don't have, okay. We have number six is the ordinance, amending parades and special events.
We, on that, you know, we talked about it last meeting, we've all sat down and talked about it, and we were working on coming up with an ordinance right now, but I feel that we should table this till next month's meeting till we can get the wording like we want it.
We have a motion to table, do I have a second?
If, unless there's some disagreement, we'll just go ahead and move it to consent agenda, okay?
Anybody have any?
I have a question. So if we do this, and we rewrite the wording, then how, how does that follow? Is that two more?
No, just, just one more, unless we're, it's a completely different sort of ordinance, but we can tweak it. I mean, that's the purpose of having two readings, really.
Okay.
It allows us to do that. Now, Mr. Terrence, I understand there's someone that wanted to speak on this, you want to have, hear them now, or do you want to wait till later?
Well, I told them we could get them, we could work them in here, they want to come, Mr. Nate McDaniel's, they root from Valley Vibes, and he has something he'd like to say to us, since this does deal with them directly, and he said it would only be a few minutes, so if you'll come.
Yeah, I'll take two more of your time, I appreciate y'all taking a minute. Forgive me, I only have three copies of this, my printer ran out of ink, but there you go. This is just an update on where we stand to this point.
We'll make some copies, sir.
Yeah, no problem.
So I know the main concern, primarily, there's so many concerns, but the main concern has been the traffic flow in and out of that property. So after speaking with the property owner, he's agreed to clear an exit, it's in progress, he has an easement to Hallam Lane which adjoins that property. So we'll have an entrance point and an exit point will flow one way through that. That's outlined in this paperwork, along with a state level permit from GDOT for variable message boards, those will be placed before Hallam Lane and before Doyle Lane, northbound and southbound respectively, and those will, in the week prior, warn folks, hey, expect delays during these dates, and during the event, it'll warn them to slow down. I've been speaking with Sheriff Ray Cross and Lieutenant Hughes about getting deputies out there near the railroad tracks, that's a stipulation from Norfolk Southern. They've agreed to slow train traffic for that weekend, so that's a big plus. We're trying to cover all our bases here, so there's no concern for public safety. So I left my card on those, you're more than welcome to take a look at that, and if you guys have any questions or concerns, I'll be available to address those.
Okay. So you did, you have met with the railroad, to my understanding, correct, and with Sheriff Cross, also GDOT, and you work, the, and you have the agreement to put an emergency exit out at Hallam Lane?
Correct.
Somehow or another, and that would only be used for emergencies, is that correct?
So it would be outflow traffic, that way we could, we don't, it's a one-lane road on Doyle, so we're concerned about...
And that's some, that's some of the concern is...
Yeah, so I figured that would, that'd kind of solve that, to an extent.
Took a beating solve.
Yes.
I have a saying about that?
Sure. We have tabled the, we've tabled the ordinance and the amending the ordinance, and he's trying to, I don't, if you have a question, you can ask a question.
I don't mind, I own the, we live on Hallam Lane.
Yes, sir.
And it's a private road, nobody's come to us and asked us to finish, okay?
Okay.
You get that straight now.
The property owner assured me that he has an easement to...
Where's the property owner?
The property owner of Bellicera, the property off Doyle Lane, that we're hosting the event at.
Who you are the property owner?
Yeah, on Hallam Lane. Yes, correct.
Nobody's come to say this.
Okay, well, we can have a discussion afterwards.
We will have a discussion.
Okay, of course.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, in terms of medical personnel, we'll have an EMT on site the whole time, as well as a registered nurse. Security's handled by US veterans and actual security personnel that work at, like, Walden Security, so these people aren't, you know, they're not new to these, this type of thing, so.
And I would like to say, you know, we're kind of to this point where we haven't had this situation before. I feel like it's kind of gotten to where it's, they're, they're trying to butt heads on, and I don't want it to be that way. It's kind, unfortunately, you guys are kind of like a guinea pig because this is, this sort of thing has not happened here, and I appreciate that you're trying to do it correctly in the right way and keeping everybody safe, and that's what, what I want to see done. I don't want you to feel that we're trying to...
Yeah, I spoke, I spoke to many of you, so, and you know, you've reassured me, they're not trying to stop us from doing this, you know, I think you get where our hearts at, and yeah, we're going to try to do everything we can to make sure we're, we're doing it by the book, so I don't want y'all to think we're just having some big party in the woods, you know, that's, you know, unregulated, so.
Well, that, I mean, that's okay too, but, and with this, with the ordinances, which I think has got mis-screwed somehow, is that it's, you know, that we're trying to tell you not to do something, and that's not the case. It's, it's kind of more of a checklist, you know, all these things you obviously had to go through, you know, in the future, that's what we're, we're trying to look ahead to make sure that everybody has that checklist done correctly, and we're doing our job to.
I'm sure, I'm sure you've done your due diligence. I would say Walker County has a good model for the special event use permits. It was, it was very, it was very clear cut for us last year, I think we spent, like, maybe $500 in total to get all the proper permits and stuff for it, and their county that's done large events, and they do them regularly, so they have that Honeybee Fest and a bunch of stuff like that, so I don't know, I'm sure y'all have already looked at it, but I would encourage you to.
Yes. I have researched the North Georgia ordinance for several weeks now, so.
And after we met at the railroad, you and Ted and Alex and the sheriff, Cross and David Hughes, Lieutenant Hughes, we could tell y'all were wanting to do it right. I mean, so we're wanting to help do it right, so we're all, we're on the same page.
And I realize that property itself is really, offers up the most, you know, issues of any property we could have chosen, I feel like, but we're doing what we can, so I hope y'all know that, and I'm always open to any questions, if you have a call, if you need to call me, text me, email.
And believe and understand, as Melissa, we're trying to get it, whatever we do, we're trying to get it right too, with the people of Dade County, safety in mind, it's not, you know, we get, to be very well honest with you, we've been beat up with emails and that kind of thing, but our concern is the safety, not only for the citizens of Dade County, but back, when, when you're back there with a number of people and being able to reach you with an ambulance or sheriff's, you know, whatever, we need to get back there, that we can do it, and that's why we're doing the due diligence on this.
And luckily, luckily, you know, our board members are all from here, so they, we know some folks, my stepdad's going to be the EMT on site, and he's, he's about to start working for Puckett, which I think is the county provider, so...
They were.
Oh, okay, so it's moving to Memorial or something?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
But Puckett was up until a few months ago.
Well, I imagine he'll be privy to some information, he can act as a liaison if we need, we need to.
Sure.
Any questions, concerns? Happy to answer anything.
Yeah, do a good job, we appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate y'all.
Thank you for coming.
Yep.
The funnily, the festival actually in Dade County that they used to have up on top of the mountain?
It is Dade, it is, yes.
Yeah, I, I heard they had it for years and years, you know, I, I'm not, as for me, the way that it's made, some of y'all would be, but I, I just, I didn't know in the aspect of how that was handled in the past, you know, and stuff, that they said it got pretty big there for a while.
It, it has, and as, as Mr. McDaniel just said, a lot of this stems from the railroad crossing, the narrow road, pulling in and out on a kind of a blind side if you're going north, with the, you know, a lot of traffic in and out, and so it is a different, and that's the reason that we're looking, because everything is, you know, some things are done in a church parking lot or a backyard, they're not done where you're, you know, impeding the services, and if other people should live there, that, you know, they may have a dialysis patient or a heart patient living.
That festival is on 136, right on 136 at busy intersection, you know, 136 is very busy, especially with all of those now 18-wheelers flying, flying across the mountain. Nobody knows this is this, we never see any sheriffs or anyone up there. There are constant accidents, as was witnessed the other day, on the mountain, constant. We are constantly kept from driving off them. So there is, there is an issue up there. What we're concerned about is that you will use this platform to take away more and more and more of our rights, and we want this stopped now. We want a moratorium on all of your ordinances until the election is audited. Everything, everything.
Well, this is not the time for, I mean, it is the time for, you know, we gave, we gave them a...
You, you need to stop. Every ordinance, every discussion that you're having until the election is forensically audited, because we know that there are several people who cheated in this election in this county. The dead person that voted could have, should have nullified the election for the entire United States. Something needs to stop now.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, that was tabled, it'll be on the consent agenda, to be tabled, that ordinance at this time. Melissa, would you like to speak number seven to the, I know we don't have anything on it yet, but if you want to do it, or do you want to table it?
Yeah, we have been talking, Patty and I have been researching, looking at venues, small venues, larger venues, just every, every aspect of how this, how this needs to go, and we have come up with hopefully a solution that we're going to take before Robin and see how it plays out legally. So it's, it's a much bigger, bigger...
Legally, she?
Yeah, than just, just writing something down and...
Okay. So you'll have something maybe for the next meeting?
I'm hoping so, yes.
All right, but you're...
Will that one take two readings, two robin, or will it?
It would take two readings, so maybe we'll just bring it up, I think we've got three meetings, and I'll just, we can work that, work that through, I understand your concerns.
All right, and they're, they're really kind of needing that.
Yeah.
So we're, and as we're tabling that right now, because we don't have anything on it.
And with that, with that said, with Valley Vibes, it's, you know, we've discussed that it's, unfortunately, they're, they're kind of a test, test run, so things may go a certain way with them, that this could be, when it all plans out, it'll be a little bit different. So we're trying to, we're trying to get everything together as much as we can to get things going for them to.
So Nate, that, the festival is September the 2nd?
Third through the field. I am working with a brewer currently, so I'm holding off until I know something, obviously, but they would bring out licensed folks to come forward and stuff.
Okay, well, with that, that would depend on, that's a problem that we, we do, we don't have. So when you say license, that, nobody could come into the county right now other than Jeffersons that are actually licensed.
They do the county, okay.
Yes, so that, that's one of, that's another thing that we're, we're trying to hammer out along with, with not having an ordinance for that situation, so.
But we're going to try to get it in done in time.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, if you need anything from me, I'm happy to help.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Resolution R-23-21, to amend the fiscal year budget, Don?
Yes, this is part of last year's amendments that we are still going through, and we will have one more in September, at latest October, well, probably September, to finalize the fiscal year 2021 budget. We're currently in the FY22 budget, and it is customary to bring these revised budget summaries to the board for approval, and you can see that what's changing here, the, the overall change is a zero change. We have $540,000 in revenue, which was reflected from, mostly from grant funds, as you see at the top there, with FEMA state grant, LMEG grant, the FEMA was $190,000, FEMA was, I'm sorry, LMEG, which is the local maintenance improvement grant for, from the Georgia Department of Transportation, was $145,000, and then additional ad valorem taxes that came in, motor vehicle for $95,000, intangible tax $55,000, commissions and vouchers $30,000, and recording fees $25,000. So those tallied at $540,000, and the offset to that is in FEMA capital improvements for $316,000 in emergency management, and also the FEMA shelters, an increase of $224,000.
So it's just showing where the money is going, where it's from, and that it is going into the account, right?
Right, and this is for, again, for last year's budget, but we have to start cleaning those things up, that as these revenues start coming back in, their accounts receivable for last year is what it is, and so we're, we're trying to clean up the different departments in preparation for the annual audit.
All right, any questions?
Yes.
All right, we'll put that on the consent agenda. Number nine, the construction management service for the whole courthouse.
And so the Historic Preservation Commission has been meeting, of course, they meet monthly, and we've met with Jamie Blevins, James Blevins, I should say, is this?
We call him Jamie.
Jamie is what we call him, yeah, right. Jamie Blevins here at this meeting, what, maybe three months ago or so, and since then, we've met with him twice, with the HPC meeting, and then even his latest, a couple of weeks ago. There's, we're still working out details as to, you know, what do we want him to do? Is it just construction consulting, is it construction management, is it, you know, how fast does the project want it, do you want the project to move? There's different things that he's proposing, so I would recommend, especially since Chairman Runly was not here, that you table this issue tonight, and then just take this information, basically 81 pages of information. Now, a lot of this is just contract, standard contract languages, you know, but I copied his email on top, it gives a summary of what he's proposing, and just take a look at that, and...
He'd worked with the architect?
Yeah, he's already spoken with it.
He brings that way in.
Yeah, he spoke with the architect, Bruce Case, and so they've met and went, reviewed those plans, and so he's just wanting to start figuring out from the commission standpoint, what do you want to, him to do, what, what's the goal? And so if you have an opportunity to speak with him directly, feel free to, or we can ask him back to a meeting, probably maybe in September.
Do you recommend table it?
I do.
If anybody wants to come to the next Historic Preservation Committee meeting?
Yeah.
They'll be furthered as quick, what day is that?
It's the third Wednesday.
Third Wednesday right here in this room.
Yep.
All right, number 10?
Which would be the 18th.
Resolution R-25-20, our agreement with the Alliance for Dade Incorporated, also known as the Chamber of Commerce.
Would you like them to come up and kind of talk about the agreement?
I think it would be beneficial, yeah.
George and Marcy, or George, or whoever?
We've worked with William Back and hammered out a, hopefully we've hammered out an agreement for the funding that we have been, we requested and not quite been granted yet based on the contract. I'm here to say that there's many items under the chamber's obligation, there's several of them, and many of those we already have in place, but there's a couple that we need to work on, so they're not all quite there yet. So we're, we're in agreement, we, the Alliance for Dade Chamber of Commerce, is in agreement with this contract and are willing to sign it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I just got, we appreciate everything y'all have been doing, it's turned our chamber from something that was dead and gone to back alive, and enthusiastic people are really working hard toward it.
Thank you.
It's good for the county, and I know y'all put a lot of personal time into it, so...
Yeah.
You and the other members.
Yeah, we have a lot of good volunteers, so, and we, we did discuss this at our board meeting earlier this week, we had one on Tuesday night, and our board's in agreement with executing this agreement.
If anybody hasn't seen, the chamber is right on the other side of the courthouse square, it's really nice, so take time to go by there.
Yeah, we're working out of the Welcome Center, so...
Yeah, it's where we, Welcome Center, I think, yeah.
This is an older contract that was from 2017, I think that Robin had proposed, I mean, this was the last active contract, okay? So they were provided this contract, William Back assisted them, and just going through and updating it, you know, if you need more time to review it, again, I wish Chairman Runly was here, I don't know where he stands on the issue, but it's pretty straightforward, but we have budgeted $10,000 for the chamber, which is already in effect, I mean, that is, that is there. But I told them originally, you know, even though it's budgeted, we still have to have an agreement in place in order to execute payment. we still have to have an agreement in place in order to execute payment, you know, with anyone really, especially a third party or not-for-profit, so. I don't know if you want to consider it or table it, or what you want to do.
I'm good with it, I'm making motion that we put it on the consent agenda.
I'm good with it too.
Yeah, I think Ted is too, from, I haven't heard anything negative from, from him.
All right, we'll put that on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 11 is a handbook, personnel handbook policy that I think we need to look at.
Yeah.
Much more, as well as the number 12, also a personnel problem with a handbook. As you say, it's a return to work and a dealing with sick leave bank. So I, I think that we look at them more and talk about them. It, it would be in our interest to.
Table?
Table these.
Okay.
Both number 11 and 12, they deal with employees and, and handbook. Unless there's, I mean, if everybody's okay with it.
No, I, I agree, that needs to happen.
That'll go tabled, Rebecca. Let's see, and what we have to deal with here, number 13, Resolution R twenty-eighth dash twenty-one, and it is the Title VI Plan for Public Transportation, which is one of those reoccurring things that we do, I think, every year. Is that correct, Don?
It's, we do it every three years.
Three years.
And very little has changed. In fact, I'm not aware of any material changes in this from the last time we adopted it. We just updated the dates and actually updated the dates before we, I put it online, but it's actually July, July 8th on the very front copy here is actually today's date. So that's the only change I'm aware of.
Any questions? I just think we have that, because a lot of people need it. No questions, we'll put that on the consent agenda, Rebecca.
Then tell them what that is, huh? They might realize what title that is. I've got the senior business in the.
It's the, I can read the resolve. The above recitals are incorporated with reference into the one body of the resolution such recitals adopted finding in fact that makes the Board of Commissioners Dade County, Georgia, approves 2021 Dade County Title VI Plan for Transit Operations as presented. To the extent that there are typographical administrative areas that do not change the tenor, the tone, the concept of the resolution, the resolution may be revised without subsequent approval from the Board of Commissioners. But this is something, it, it has to do with the public transit through our, I guess most people would call it part of the senior citizens building. And we do have some, that is both federal, state, federal, state and local dollars, as far as that goes, but this is not, this is just dealing with the wording and to continue on, is that correct?
Well, what it, yeah, and it provides for a complaint procedure on a federal program level, because it's coming, there's FTA money, Federal Transit Authority money, coming down to the state government, and the state government, GDOT, has been funneling it on down to here. So because of that, we have to comply with certain federal regulations. And one of those is to have a Title VI Plan in place for nondiscrimination policy statement, and just a commitment on the management side to address any kind of complaints that come before, you know, from the general public or anyone else, really. And then there's, it talks about record retention, and it talks, you know, how, how do you do that? And you deal with subcontractors or you don't, and investigations, and that's what it's about. And it, it very, very rarely changes, but it is a plan that we have to adopt in order to maintain public transit in Dade County.
Everybody good with it?
Yes, sir, good with it.
Consent agenda. Next, we just have notice of public hearings. I do want to mention, it's quite often, we have always heard throughout the years that we never plan for anything. In reality, we have no choice but to plan every five years, and this is the update of the Joint Comprehensive Plan that we do every five years. It's just hard to believe that it's, five years has gone by since our last one. We will be having a, a meeting, and meetings, it will go on, it can go on for several meetings.
It will.
This is, can be attended by businesses, it can be attended by citizens regardless. It can be, the last one I remember coming to, we had a minister from one of the churches here in the county that came, and that was five years ago, so my memories. But it, the, to give you an idea of what this is, it's where ideas come from, from the citizenry of, let's say, walking trails. I think one thing that's been brought up several times is a sidewalk from Larry Moore's funeral home beyond the high school. Things like that, that people want to see the county do. And I said this, I guess, yesterday, the greatest plans still require money when it's all said and done and how to get it. But this is through the Department of Community Affairs, and that's where grant money and that kind of thing comes from, that rolls down to the counties, whether it's for infrastructure projects, walking trails. I mean, it can be a variety of things, that the citizens say, I'd like to see this in Dade County. It's not a promise you're going to get it, but it is a plan taking everybody's ideas in, is that?
That's right, I meant that's.
And so they're, they're held here, and they are notice of when they're going to be. And everybody, I want you to know you're in this room, you're watching on TV, you are welcome to come to those meetings. It's not for the commission, it is for the commissioner as a citizen, but also for any other citizen, business owner, school system, it doesn't matter what. So that is just for information, that it will be, it will be done, and that's, that's how we plan, and we've always, it's always been that way.
It also allows us to remain a qualified local government, which is a requirement to receive grants and the state of Georgia. So again, that will be held here on A, the nineteenth of, I'm trying to find the date on here, I got so many dates on here. August nineteenth, yeah, at 5:00 PM. And it also is considered a joint comprehensive plan with the city of Trenton. So many counties and cities work together on these, and we, we do as well. Partner with the city very well with them. So it's a public hearing notice officially given here for Thursday, August nineteenth at 5:00 PM. And it's just the beginning. We'll need to form stakeholders, so if you are a stakeholder in the community, you want to be considered a stakeholder, we would love to have you serve.
All right, I've attended these before, it's, it's really, it's really a neat way of doing things. A lot of times they'll put groups of people in the room, and they'll have their paper boards to write on. This group will write down, this is what we'd like to see come to Dade County. That group would be doing it, and another group would be doing it. Then you put them all together, and if there's three or four of the same thing that people are wanting, well, that's what we would concentrate on. So it's, it's really a good deal.
There's, there's a 10-year, a 20-year, and a five-year. This is just our five-year update, so it, it's not extensive, but it, it, it matters, and it's required.
Well, it gives a chance to add to, you know.
It does.
You know, what, what might have changed in, in the last five years that people would like to see added to it. And the most important thing to reiterate over and over, it is for everyone in this county that wants to attend to come and, and listen. It will be handled by the Department of Community Affairs. They will send people up to do it, so keep that in mind. Going to our next one is a special notice to call meeting, consider adoption of the 2021 millage rate. It is, I'll just read it, there may be, if anyone has a question. A special call meeting is hereby announced by Dade County Board of Commissioners to be held on Monday, August the sixteenth, at twenty, uh, 2021, at 6:30 PM, here in this room, public meeting room located Dade County Administrative Building, 71 Kase Avenue, to consider for adoption the 2021 millage rate for the unincorporated and incorporated areas of Dade County, Georgia. The three public hearings that have taken place was August the fourth, which was yesterday, we held two meetings, one at 11:00 AM and the other at 6:00 PM. And there is one to be held August the twelfth at 6:00 PM, right here, and that'll be the third mandatory meeting for that. So if you want to come to that, that will be the last meeting before the meeting to adopt. All right? And I think that's everything, just, wasn't anything else added, was there?
I'd like to maybe ask Robin a question before we close out.
Okay.
Is this the proper time to go ahead and add, amend in that alcohol ordinance to these, these two meetings that we're going to be having?
Yeah, but we, we can add that to the agenda whenever, I mean, you, we don't have to formally do it tonight, but whenever the notice of the meetings come out, you can do it.
Because some of these have done well. The sixteenth and the nineteenth haven't come out yet.
Or.
Or the twelve, it, it's up to y'all.
Or another one.
That's right.
I just want, I know they're waiting to get an answer, so I'd like to help them if we could.
Well, that's what Patty and I have been meeting about, and we're hoping to get all that kind of more down on paper, probably the first of the week. So we, we've, we've worked out, I think, a pretty good plan, so I would like everybody to.
Look it over.
Look it over and make sure that that's the right way to go.
So it can be done later, isn't it, be efficient, isn't it? Okay, that concludes our workshop agenda. We do have one very special announcement that Mr. Evan Stone wants to make, concerning something taking place this Monday, coming Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is more of an invite and information for those of you that may have been at the Alliance for Dade Luncheon Learn today, you already know, but Monday morning at 11 o'clock, the commission and everyone here is invited. They're going to be naming the intersection of Highway 299 and Highway 11 as the Philip Street Memorial Intersection on the north end of the county. This was put through, through state legislation, because it's state highway. The Philip's family, of course, if anybody here don't know, Philip was our sheriff for 20 years, and, and unfortunately passed away, locked Commissioner Bradford with, with COVID. And this is going to be, there'll be signage put up, and so there's going to be a, a service, a memorial type of unveiling, the family is coming. They picked the date and also picked the area. You may ask why 29911. Of course, those of us that grew up around here knew that Philip, and his mother still lives on the north end, but he grew up on the north end, went to Wildwood School, and, you know, so that's the reason that intersection is being, has been chosen. It was signed Senator Mullis and Representative Cameron, and put it through legislation this year, and the governor signed it on July 1st, and this was the time to do it, on the night. So if there's anybody here that wants to come, they're, the sheriff, Sheriff Cross has got permission from the Seventh-day Adventist Church there, where their building is, right off the road, parking lot. Everybody can park there, and they're, they're going to be able to, to bus everybody over to the intersection, where we don't have cars going up down the road on both sides. As many, now, there's going to be a lot of law enforcement there. Georgia State Patrol's coming, TDOT's going to be there, of course, they're unveiling the signs. And so there'll be a ceremony there at 11 o'clock. And of course, all of y'all are invited, and everybody here is invited too. Any, any other questions? They just asked me to.
This, this coming Monday, 11 o'clock.
Monday, August 99.
299 intersection.
At 11:00 AM, Highway 299 and, and Highway 11.
One question I got today from the meeting. Some people don't know where the Seventh-day Adventist Church is, so if you turn left on 299, the first turn on the right, you'll see the church and the parking lot.
Yeah, so Wildwood.
Lifestyle.
Lifestyle Center, thanks. Wildwood Lifestyle Center. And they've got a really nice parking lot down there, and they've, the sheriff called and asked if they'd mind everybody parking there, and they graciously agreed, yes, that would be great. And that'll keep everybody from just parking on the side of the road. Monday morning, 11:00 AM.
Thank you, David. All right, that concludes our work, work session, and we'll take about a five, six-minute break, and we'll come back to our regular commission, monthly commission meeting.